Welcome to our special call board meeting. September the 21st, 5:00 PM, and we are right on time. So I would like, we need to approve the meeting agenda as it has been submitted. We need a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for the approval of the meeting agenda as submitted. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all. And then item number three is the approval of the previous minutes from previous meetings on August the 26th and September the 12th. We need a motion, please.
Motion that we approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the August 26th and September the 12th board meetings. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Okay, but you know what, next item we have reserved for the public, do we have anybody? Okay, under item number five, Ms. Kelly? We have a special.
They're kind of bad.
That's right. We have a special presentation.
So this group of students is from our Blue Academy, and they invited a couple of their friends to perform for you the same. They should be the top four. And that is our Blue Academy with musicians in the making.
Well, I think once again, Danville shines tonight. This wonderful group of children from the Blue Academy showed off their talents to us, and this is just a part of being a board member that makes our job really a great job. So thank you again to Tolliver and staff for allowing us to be in the building. And Ms. Pageant, we thank you for being our board liaison. It keeps our lives a lot easier. And just a big thanks to everybody, staff, and all those that take care of our kids. Okay, number five, A, we have board member comments, Mr. Gober?
None.
You guys?
I'm gonna shout out our academic team, who did a really good job over the weekend. The high school academic team, and they are gonna meet, they qualified for a national competition, so we're really excited about that.
Now, I think I read here it's been since 2017, so fantastic, great job for these guys. Asher, do you have anything else you want to?
No, Jennifer, I should go first, my only comment. And then my other one is gonna be a shout out to Ms. Weathers this weekend, or I'm sorry, Tuesday, it was Tuesday, and she's had her presentation, so just a shout out to her.
Yeah, I couldn't be there for that, and she was presenting how making it, it was a pie or apple pie?
Cake.
I think it was making a pie.
It was a pie.
Uh, and it was, I guess it helped her, you know, I don't know if it's emotional or just thinking about things, so I wish I could have seen it. She's gonna be doing it again, though.
Yeah, there's another one next week, isn't there?
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure, yes, Tolliver, there is a fourth.
So anyways, it's another one of our things our board members do, contribute to what's going on in the community. So my only comment is, is a big shout out to everybody that is involved in the Danville schools. We're talking not just staff and teachers, but we're talking parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles and all those that, everybody contributes, and you know, we're on our way to good things, and it's already starting to happen. So I always hear about the schools, things are operating well, kids are doing well, teachers are doing well, I think, but I'm not gonna wood. And just a good opportunity for us right now. Okay, superintendent?
Well, it's been a very busy week. I was fortunate enough to meet with state directors for Special Olympics, and along with board member's brother, Jason Weathers, we're gonna watch Special Olympics for the Danville area, so we're super excited about that. That's a huge win for us. And we're gonna start with, because of the season, we're gonna start with cheerleading and basketball. We just missed bowling, which I think would have been really cool, but we're also talking about, we haven't created that communication yet, but because swimming is such a long-term growth sport, we may go ahead and get that started to eventually, but we're definitely gonna start with basketball and cheerleading. So that's the highlight of the week so far. I was also able to meet with the Norton Center today, and they have committed to really helping us, not only with tickets, but with just some really cool opportunities to the Norton Center with Danville Middle School, so I'm super excited about that as well.
Fantastic. All right. There, the report on staff, on the personnel notifications, if you have any questions, just get with the superintendent on that. And then let's move down to item five E. Brian, Mr. Gober?
Yep.
These are award recipients.
Oh, yes, well, yes. So.
Back to Ross.
Yeah, so KBE has issued an award called the Stillwell Award, is named after William E. Stillwell, a longtime faculty member of the University of Kentucky's College of Education, who worked diligently throughout his career to improve K-12 educator access to modern technology. This award is specific to the two-year timeframe, recognizing the unique circumstances that came from the pandemic and the crucial role technology staff and faculty played in supporting the Kentucky education, educational system. And we have a few award recipients, so I wanna make sure I get their names out there All right, obviously, our first award person is Mr. Gober himself. He pretty much leads the team, and it's very unfortunate that we just list him as the technology director, because I'd say that this man is integral in every aspect of Danville Middle Schools, that is a fact, but for the sake of this moment, we'll just say, Mr. Gober, our technology director. Also, we're recognizing from Hogsitt, Norma Hopkins, from Tolliver, Sarah Bowman, from BAE, John D. Smith, or J.D. Smith, from Danville High School, Brent Bowman, and our district person is Brian Gober.
If you all will come up. Then Esther, will you be the board representative?
Sure.
You have to get your awards.
And I do have to say, Brian Gober does make our jobs a lot easier.
Well, my team also has an award. James Bender, our network engineer, and Chris Buckman and David Cook, they get a coin as well. They're our district technicians, and they help us every day, especially during the winter.
They really do all the work.
Yeah.
So the other ones for the two technicians?
Yeah, I'll, I can take those two.
All right.
Okay, see my snap in pictures?
Yes.
Fantastic. It's always nice to be rewarded, so, and be recognized. Okay, item five F is the arts update, this student?
Yes, thank you for inviting me today, and I'm gonna just spend a couple of minutes updating you on where we are with the arts. And if I don't use this, is that okay?
That's fine.
You might wanna direct your attention to the slides, but I will tell you what's important on the slides, so if you can't see them real well, that's fine. So I just framed it because we, I haven't come to the board in a while, so to remind you kind of where we've come from, where we are now, and where we are going. And some of that's still unknown, and that's the exciting part. Okay, so the purpose of the arts in the Danville schools, to provide high-quality, standards-based learning experiences in dance, media arts, music, theater, and visual arts for all students, for all students. And that last part is really, really essential. And this year, the arts faculty and I are kind of doing a deep dive into the structures that support that purpose. And to do that, we are looking at curriculum and scheduling, staffing, resources and equipment, and facilities through the lens of some standards that were developed when the, with the release of the National Core Arts Standards in 2014, and they're called the Opportunity to Learn Standards. And by really kind of digging into those and analyzing where we are with those, we can figure out, are we providing the supports needed for that high-quality, standards-based education? And we know we have a lot of them, but one thing that, that often comes up, and that previous superintendents have called me on, is Jane, where are the numbers? Where are the numbers? So these Opportunity to Learn Standards, and looking at our programs through the lens of those, will give us some of the data that perhaps we've been lacking, where we, where we really shine, where we might want to look to improve, and just kind of clarifying for us where we are for our students. So where we have come from is, I've kind of given you a deep dive back, those, some of those photos are from the 1969 band program, and that's because Danville, the Danville schools have a rich tradition in the arts, in supporting the arts. And that was, of course, the band that won all kinds of accolades, and went to Florida to perform at one of the, one of the, I can't remember which bowl, but one bowl. Citrus Bowl, do you remember?
Citrus Bowl.
Yeah. So there's been a lot of community support for the arts. Now, when I came in 2000, we actually had subpar scores in Arts and Humanities. And by the time we finished up, and that's why we've got this little photo over here with the elements and principles of the art form, by the time they finished testing in the arts in 2009, our, all of our schools were scoring high proficient and up into the distinguished area in the Arts and Humanities test. And I think that speaks to our perseverance, our support, and our caring and our nurturing of the arts. We looked at what we had, and we had good programs, so why weren't we doing better on that particular evaluation? Well, we looked at that, we figured it out, and we got there, and we continue to do that. The newly renovated Performing Arts Center, which happened, which reopened in the spring of 2000, and was the impetus for the position that I currently hold, which was hired in August of 2000. When that renovation was done, they basically shut down the space. There was fear about breaking things, not knowing how to run things, not how to operate it in a way that was authentic to what they put into it. And the one thing that Mr. Roland and the board told me when I was hired, the one kind of real specific thing was, make this space usable and accessible to our students, to our community, to our stakeholders. And even coming out of COVID in 21, 22, we had over 25,000 people using that facility. So I think, I think we've, we've come there. And there are lots of other things to say about where we've come from with the arts, but I'll kind of, I'll kind of leave it as that. I can't go probably more than a couple of weeks without having a conversation with someone in the community, and them going, oh, I remember when I was up there on that stage, and I remember when I was doing this, and we take a little walk down, back in our memories of their time in the Arts at the Danville Schools. So through the years, in addition to the test scores, we built up our capacity for the arts. We had an after-school spring strings program that we're big, we're able to bring back this year. We, we went from, the year I started was the first year there were ever visual arts teachers in our schools, and we went from very little visual art to winning awards in visual art contests, let alone doing projects that put the arts front and center for our students every day. And that's, that's, that's an older photo, but that was when the arts were in a summer program, and the K1s did an exhibit of paper airplanes that they had decorated, and that was flown through the lobby of Danville High School. We brought world-class performers to the Danville Schools. Yo-Yo Man, the Silk Road Ensemble, on our stage continues to be a high point for me if I kind of get low about anything, I just go back to Yo-Yo Man. And we integrated the arts into other subject areas. The marketing classes started doing posters for the plays, and that certainly isn't the only piece of integration that happened. In fact, I was just reminded that the family literacy night at Hogsitt included times for families to experience the arts together, drawing with sidewalk chalk, instrument, petting zoo, those kinds of things. And of course, you as the board, and I think there may have been only one member from that time, but in 2019, you received a national award from the, from the National School Boards Association for your support of the arts. So we cultivated community partnerships, we make opportunities count. Now, we're doing standards-based visual art and music in all of our schools. Dance, media arts, theater opportunities are both in our curriculum and extracurricular, and where, where possible, they are standards-based. We are on phase two of three phases in renovating the lighting systems in the Gravely Hall Performing Arts Center. When we opened in 2000, everything was state-of-the-art, but as we know with technology, and Mr. Gober will sit over here and nod at me, it goes stale pretty quickly, but we've been able to keep it running, but we are in the process of updating our lighting systems. And as, we would have a new light board today if it wasn't for supply chain issues. That will hopefully come in, in October, and I think it's the light, I don't know, how many times has it been pushed back?
Twice.
Twice, okay. Creating, and you saw that right here, making art is really a strong focus of our curriculum. And we do that because that's so important for kids. That's so important for kids, for them to have a time where they have time to express themselves, learning the elements and principles, and you saw that in one of the earlier slides, and then putting it together to create. You saw the focus that happened there, you saw the perseverance that happened there. They are making art, and they are proud of making art. So creating has become a major focus. We are continually looking for funding. We continue to cultivate community partnerships. Last year, we began a focus on social emotional learning and the arts, which is a huge trend in research nationwide. So social emotional learning doesn't just happen in social emotional learning time, it happens when these kids are sitting here, working as a team, working together, making art. And it happens with all of our arts students. We're, we are, we are having some deep discussions on intentional arts integration and what that means. We're researching and reviewing new trends and approaches, and we're always asking, where is there room for the arts? Where is there room? Because that creates opportunities. So what's next? We've gone from photos of kids making art and, and teachers doing professional development and bringing that back to us about the arts, to all of the various partnerships and structures that inform what we do every day. We're collecting and analyzing data from the OTL standards that I mentioned. We are doing Gravely updates, which are just essential to keeping that facility up and running and serving our students. The arts faculty are looking at revising our values, our, our vision and our goals. We worked on values before school started, and we're moving on to vision and goals. We're continuing to cultivate community and statewide partnerships, and now we're even cultivating an international partnership. I had an exchange with the Ross Crepe Academy, and they may be joining us in some of our Franklitz Walker Literary Festival poetry contest work. So that's kind of exciting, that we're, we've had an international focus before with some training from the globe, most recently with Mr. Rickmers, but this extends us into student-to-student exchange, which is very exciting. Strengthening the understanding of the relationship between the arts and social emotional learning, supporting high-quality, standards-based instruction for all of our students, continuing to think outside of the box, and approaching the next decade with confidence that the arts remain core in the Danville Independent School District. And that might be our most important piece. This year, I'm not gonna take the time to read all of this, and this is not a comprehensive list, but I'm gonna point out just a couple of things that, I guess, you know, I could get excited about anything on this list, quite frankly, but I'll point out just a couple of things. We've got a couple of new outstanding arts faculty, and in fact, just as I was walking in here, someone was talking about how great the new dance and theater teacher that teaches right here in this room is, and he's a 2012 DHS alum, and he was a member of our awards-winning forensics team. He did a lot with theater, he was onstage in Gravely often, he won, he was part of a cast that won awards at the State Theater Festival his, his junior year, so it's great to have him. It's great to have our new vocal music teacher, who is already taking students to choral music opportunities. She and I took a group of students to the Bluegrass Choral Festival a couple Saturdays ago at UK, so that's happening already. We've restarted the after-school strings program. We've got a couple of new collaborations. One is part of the School to Work and the Independent Study Program at Danville High School, and for those of you who are around, you probably remember the skeletons up on Maple Avenue up here. We have students through our School to Work and Independent Study Projects working with Danville skeletons. I'm getting that exhibit up and going, and that's pretty exciting. They are building dragons and, and ghosts and all kinds of fun things. And, and we are also this year hosting part of the KTA High School Festival at Danville High School early in November. So something that actually really excites me because COVID did a number, especially on a because COVID did a number, especially on our performing arts programs. It, it, it wasn't just us, it's everywhere, right? But 50% of our Dambler marching admirals are new band members. I mean, that, that just, it kind of, kind of blows my mind just a little bit to go, wow, there's so many students, new members wanting to join this program and become successful in this, in this program. Both our band and choir will be doing adjudicated opportunities for band and choir this year again. I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the Friends of the Arts Committee, that is part of the Dambler Schools Education Foundation, that has become just essential to the well-being of the arts in the Dambler Schools. And they are, they are supportive in many, many ways. Monthly arts PLC meetings, which are just kind of essential to our work, getting us back on the same page, meeting with the arts faculty. The high school is dedicated, and we've got students who are on track to graduate through the Seal of Arts Excellence Program that you all approved at the beginning of last summer. And then, we are still rooted in our traditions. We go back to that first slide. We are rooted in those folks who remind me of their performances up on the stage, who remind me of the art tiles in the old art room. We're rooted in those traditions, and we are at the same time moving forward with arts for all. Anybody have any questions?
Just like the other one.
Keep up the good work.
We have a great history, like you said. Jane, thank you for all you do, and to all your faculty and staff that you work with. Couldn't be, you know, what a team.
Keep up the enthusiasm, but you sure have it.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, the, the arts are not really a priority for, unfortunately, for a lot of school districts. And, you know, the arts is where students are learning these valuable, essential skills that our employers want, collaboration, problem-solving, setting a goal and moving toward that goal. And so when we continue, not we, but when the education field continues to cut arts programs, it's really kind of setting their students up to not be as competitive when they go out into the world to search for jobs. So I encourage this board and this district to keep the arts at the forefront because it is a gateway for so many of our students to move into other fields.
Thank you, Mrs. Pusteri.
Well, we thank you so much, great presentation.
Thanks.
All right, let's move on to Elaine Wilson-Reyn. All right, let's move to 5H, which is Kendall and Friends. Suzanne, Ms. Farm, you're going to introduce.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So I just wanted to come back to the board. We had talked at the last meeting about Hogsette wanting to create a fully accessible playground for our students, an inclusive playground experience. And we talked in some detail about where we really want that and what that might look like. I know Mr. Dunn is working on getting that bid posted. And we wanted to, grateful that you are giving us the opportunity to let Crimson Clayphone from Kendall and Friends to talk a little bit about how they've partnered with districts and organizations in the past and what those relationships have looked like. Because for us, it's a, we really know that we would need a partner that could help us with the fundraising, and that they've been really successful in these projects in the past. So I present Crimson from Kendall and Friends, and she's got some slides to show you some of the work that they've done.
I'll set you. You know, you get up and knees cracked and all that.
I'm kidding.
No, you're fine, I'll just.
I thought we had another.
No, you are fine, you're fine. I'm Crimson Clayphone, I know some of you, I know Steve really well. I am from Kendall and Friends Foundation. We are a nonprofit organization, and we focus solely on kids with all abilities. You will often hear disabled kids, handicap, handicap accessible. We kind of use the term "all abilities" because our children are amazing, and they can do just about anything that they want to, if we provide the proper avenues for them. So I was just a normal mom, gave birth to my second daughter. She was 100% healthy, she had no issues whatsoever. At three weeks old, she contracted meningitis, and it pretty much just cooked her central nervous system. So she was given a 2% chance of living, and then we were told that if she lived past the two-month time span, that she would be nothing more than a vegetable. She would never walk, she would never talk, she would never cognitively understand anything. She would live and breathe off of ventilators and G-tubes and all that. 100%. She would, they basically just cast it aside and said, you know, you should probably call your family in, and let's make a decision of taking her off and saying your goodbyes. And that was just not going to work for me. So we, we pretty much lived at UK Hospital for a long, 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 long time. But after that, Kendall, we were able to bring Kendall home, and I'm very blessed to say about, probably she had some tears during this, but Kendall actually turns 12 on Thanksgiving Day this year. So she is extremely happy. You'll see some pictures of her here in a minute, but she's extremely happy. She is very severely disabled. She is in a wheelchair, she's non-verbal, she has seven brain tumors, she's partially blind in both eyes, epileptic, she's fed with a G2. But that is the most happiest kid you will ever meet in your life. She smiles, and it is very contagious. So I, I have been very, very blessed to experience that every single day, and we've had the opportunity to kind of spread that out into our community. So how we got started was Kendall was mainstreamed at school. Our kids go, well, we're a blended family, so I actually have three kids that go to Dambler. I have two in Tolber and one at Bates right now. And my other three go to Bergen. And we always mainstreamed Kendall. So she went on every field trip that her friends did. She was in regular classes, she did everything that they did. And we would go to Anderson Dean Park, and I would actually physically pick Kendall up out of her motorcycle. That's what she is in, she does not know what a wheelchair is. She drives a Harley, so if you ever hear us refer to that, that's what we name. But I would pick her up out of her motorcycle and literally carry her through the playground. We would sling, we would slide, we would go up and down. I'd try to hold her above my head to do the monkey bars, all of that good stuff. And I'm not a very big person, and she is 75 pounds of just dead weight. She can't maneuver any of her body or any of her extremities to help. So I'm carrying her through a jungle gym, and I tripped and fell. And I fell on top of Kendall, and I frantically, I just lose my mind. I thought, oh my gosh, I've broken a hip, I've broken her leg, I've broken her arm, I snapped her neck, I'm losing it. And she's over here like laughing because she thought that that was funny, because for the first time in her life, she failed. And she got to do something normal, she thought that was cool. Mom did not, mom freaked out. So we put Kendall back on her motorcycle, and we went for a walk around the track. And a couple of her friends came with her, and we all just kind of started talking, and we really need to build a playground that Kendall can play on. So we went back to school that day, all day long, that's all we did. We drew pictures, and you should see some of these, I mean, they're awesome. They had dinosaurs on, on race car tracks, I mean, what these kids wanted this playground to look like. So the very next day, I set out kind of, I had no idea what I'm doing. This is my very first rodeo, I know nothing, but we're going to figure it out. So five months and 22 days later, myself and six friends had fundraised in between money, monetary donations, and then in-kind donations, like labor or materials, around $350,000 in five months and 22 days to build Kendall and Friends Playground out at Anderson Dean Park. And on opening day, we had 400, 400 special needs individuals from all over the state. The very first year that the playground was open, we had 62 different school systems in the state take field trips to that playground because it was inclusive and there was something that every child could play on and interact with their peers. So we quickly, quickly, quickly realized that there are not enough resources like this around. I think that's a pretty, pretty fair statement to say. So I started getting phone calls from other places, other schools, other, other cities and counties, like, how did you do this? Are you interested in doing it here? What do we need to do? Can you give us some tips? I will be the first to say, I'm not a salesman. I do not make money off of this. I do not, I'm not in competition with any other company that does this. I do this because I have a child that desperately needed these resources, and I get paid here in the long run, and it's great. But we, we quickly saw there was such a need. So we're getting phone calls from all over the place, and one thing that I learned in the midst of this, we raised about $350,000 for this playground, but none of that money was benefiting the donors because we were not a nonprofit. They were just donating it because they wanted Kendall to have a place to play. So we started a nonprofit foundation so that our donors could benefit from that because we have some donors, I have had one donor show up to a meeting about a new playground, and I got a phone call, it was a $300,000 playground, and they wrote a $300,000 check and paid for the playground overnight. Didn't want his name on a plaque, didn't want, didn't want anybody to know who it was. He just wanted to do it because he has special needs grandson. And on the opening day of that playground, we learned that his grandson was 12, had splenitis, and that was the very first time he had ever played on a playground. And he said that it was worth every single cent that we put into it. So those are the reasons why we do what we do. So we've kind of, so far, we've worked with very, very generous people. They love what we do, they love the fact that other communities are taking the initiative to become more inclusive. Because I'm sure, I'm very sure you're aware of the grandfather role of, hey, we were built before this time, so therefore we don't have to. Well, I'm the kind of person of, I teach my children, if your integrity is intact, that's what you need to be concerned with. We don't do that because we're not grandfathered in. We do it because it's the right thing to do, it needs to be done. We need to give these kids that opportunity. So I was contacted by a lovely group of ladies that have, have been wanting to do this for a long time here in the Dambler School District. And we, we've been working back and forth together for a couple of months now, off and on, just kind of talking about ideas and what you guys want to do, and how you want to move forward with that, and what a partnership with us would look like. So like I said before, I'm not a salesman, I don't own this equipment, I don't get a commission check off of this. I have worked with several different playground companies over the years. And you quickly figure out who your people are, you know? The very first playground we did, beautiful playground, it's an 8,000 square foot, 100% all-inclusive playground. But the people that owned the business, they weren't there for the right reasons. They were there because they were getting a big fat commission check. And while everybody has to make a living, that's not what our hearts are in it for. So we, we worked with a couple of other people, and we have, time to go.
We're very energy efficient, Al.
But we, we started a partnership with a company called Miracle in Kentucky and Tennessee. And when I say that they are top-notch, they are top-notch. We have eight fully-inclusive playgrounds that we have fundraised for that are 100% open to the public, they're, they're completely finished. We have three more that we're currently working on. All but one has been done with that happening because they truly understand why we do what we do. So if you guys as a school or you as an individual would go to them and say, these are the things that I want, I need a bid, it's going to be this price. When we do a playground with them, we get a huge, huge partnership discount because, one, they know that we're in it for the right reasons, and, two, we've worked with them for so many years that they know what we're capable of doing and how quickly we can turn those things around. So I use this as an example, there was a school who, we did their playground for just this past year, opened it up. For 17 years, they've been trying to do this, for the last 17 years. And they heard of us, and they contacted us during COVID, and this is when you couldn't, you couldn't even go to Walmart at the time without, you know, full mask and jumpsuit and all that good stuff. I know we don't want to take that trip down memory lane, but we were able to completely fundraise and pay for their playground within four months during COVID, where no kids were in the building at school. And they had been trying to do this for 17 years. So we have a history of being able to connect with the community and work together, work with the students and other people in the community to get them involved as well. This totally kind of off-subject, but not, you will see me at every fundraiser that you guys do, even if we don't have a partnership with Kendall and Friends, and you guys choose to do this on your own. Because it's the right thing to do, your kids need it. And I have a child that needed these resources, so I know what it's like to want this done. I have skin in the game on that. But we don't go with Kendall, that's totally fine. I will still be there and support all that I can, and I have a lot of family and friends that do the same because they want kids like Kendall to have the same opportunities that she has. So don't feel like, you know, I'm up here trying to sell you something so I get paid out of it, because that's not what happens. One thing I do want to say, we do have a standard in my way that we usually work with. I'm, I'm not sure if that has gotten to you yet. Okay, so we'll get that to you. That, the one that we have is kind of a working one. Every school district is different, every location that we've done a playground is different. So there are things that can be tweaked that is not, this is how it's got to be type thing. So we'll send that to you guys, and you can do a working meeting, or you guys can collaborate and figure out what needs to be done and looked at and all that stuff. I know in the process of getting that RFP up and hosting that, so you guys can accept bids and all of that. And we will also submit a bid as well. So we know that there are many other playground representatives out here, and we welcome them to come in and try to put bids in for you guys because we want you to see, there are so many people out there, but there's a lot of benefits by partnering with us to where you wouldn't get that if you worked with another company. But totally, I know there are questions, and we'll get to those all. Do you want to ask something?
Yes, did you want to go over my question?
We did, yes.
I'm good about that.
Yes, we done, yeah, we'll, we'll actually go through it, do you just want to kind of?
Thank you.
What? Look, I'm the least hexavial savvy millennial there is. Stuff like this just blows my mind.
The remote, the remote?
Like on the frame, inside the frame.
I'll squat down. Actually, I'll come over here, that way, that way.
You want to explain?
Yes, so this playground is in Besnake County. This is a little bit bigger than the one in Harrisburg, I don't know. Has anybody here actually been to an on-closse playground before? Not here, but just in general, has anybody ever been to one? So there are different elements on these playgrounds that you'll notice that, I should have just said that ground a little bit earlier. So you'll see that all of our jungle gyms are rent-accessible. So, you'll see that all of our jungle gyms are rent accessible. So, kids in wheelchairs, kids that have braces, that walk in walkers or kid walks or any type of adaptable mobile devices can access the jungle gym just like a typical kid. Um, and throughout the playground, on the rents and on the sides, there are different panels that are interactive, that we have English to Spanish, Spanish to English, ASL, Braille. We have jokes to wear. My favorite one that I always talk about is, um, one side is Braille, where you can see the letters from A to Z, what they look like, what they feel like. And then on the other side, there are jokes. So, we'll ask you the question in English and in Spanish and then underneath is the answer in Braille. So, unless you know Braille, you have to interactively decode it by walking around to the other side and figuring it out. It's super, super cool. Um, I have seen kids that have spent their entire recess outside doing their little Braille charts and figuring it out. And it's awesome because it's like, when, when would you think a five or six-year-old kid would go outside, completely ignore the swings, completely ignore the mud, completely ignore slides or red rubber, red rubber, to learn Braille? And it's times like that, it's amazing. So, um, here, you'll see, this is an all-inclusive merry-go-round. We often refer to that as the Kendall go-round because she does not want to get off of it, wants you on it. So, when we go to the park, thirty minutes straight, might as well just bank on it's gonna be spent on this. But, this is actually embedded into the earth and the all-inclusive flooring rolls up to it so that she just rolls right in her motorcycle and onto the merry-go-round with no barriers. Um, beforehand, if she wanted to get on the merry-go-round, I would have to get her out of her motorcycle, lay her on the ground if nobody was with me, pick her motorcycle up, put it up on the merry-go-round, lock it, pick her up, put her in. We see that, you know, I've got three minutes left before I'm gonna pass out or die. So, we didn't get to play very often. But, we usually do an all-inclusive floor. It's made out of recycled tires. There is a grant that is available for that. I have written the grant five times and I have received it all five times. So, we have a, a great working relationship with that great committee and it, it is, it takes a village. You'll hear me say that a lot and I'm sure everybody in the jury will, will agree to that. And we have a great, great village that is on our side for making sure that we are able to provide these resources to all of the places that we work with. So, um, you can flip through to the next one. This is our Kendall and Friends playground in Georgetown. You'll see a lot of the similar, similar pieces on, on each playground. Uh, let's see. Well, we'll see a better picture on, on a different side, so you can, you can go to the next one. This is the one that we did in Maria. This one was the one that we worked on during the peak of COVID where no children were allowed in the building whatsoever at any point in time. You get the description? Yeah. So, this is the one that we did in Bergen and I have this on here because a lot of people will ask me questions about paths on the playground place where. So, let me start off by saying, whenever this was built, they had just had twelve new things put in and they were on the sides, but because they were not, we didn't put them in, we couldn't include, because, you know, we can't say, "Oh, well, this is what we didn't do that." So, there's more to the playground than was on this, but, uh, you'll see that these little green areas are for in-place paths. So, there are several places that are around here that are semi-inclusive. And what that means is they will, they will have inclusive equipment that kids with wheelchairs can access, but their entire facility may not be inclusive. So, um, I can give you an example of, pretty close to home, um, there was a typical, what we would think of as a typical playground, that had one inclusive seat, one. And they called it an inclusive playground. That's not inclusive. So, we want to make sure that we offer many, many, many varieties of inclusive pieces of equipment. That way, it's all hands-on deck. Because we don't want to come in and do this and then two months from now, "I wish we would have done something else. I wish we would have added this. I wish we would have done that." Because it's easier to do it the first time than it is to go back and add it back in. So, we'll, we'll kind of talk about those a little bit later. You can switch to the next one. This is the playground that we did down in Liberty. This is at, uh, the elementary school that is there. They also did some for in-place paths. And one, one other thing, I'll show you this. You'll, you'll see this little swing on a couple of places throughout these. That is actually a placeholder for a one hundred percent wheelchair-accessible swing. Um, because Miracle does not own that piece of property or that, that piece of equipment, we can't put a picture on that and say, "Hey, this is what we're gonna put in there" because they don't own it. So, um, but we'll, we'll see pictures of, of that here in just a few minutes. This one was super, super, super fun and, uh, I don't know if you guys can see it from this angle, but underneath these two shades, there is a brand-new product that is a sensory museum. It is super fun, super cool. Um, it is the very first playground, actually, this was the second playground in the world, the entire world, to have an all-inclusive sensory museum within the playground. So, this was something that, that came out, that came up with this during COVID and twenty twenty-one, we opened it up and it has been a huge hit. We all kind of fell in love with that and I told them the story. When we had our opening day, my daughter, my oldest daughter, was like, "Mom, can you please quit blaming this? Like, it is super hot." And it's, I was just so intrigued by it because it is just, it, it's amazing. She was like, "Look, it is hot. We need to get out of here. Like, come on." So, you can flip over to the next one.
Crimson, can I have?
Yes.
Uh, when it comes down to designs, your organization works with what's already there?
If there is something that is already there and you want it to stay there, it can and then we can add to it. If it's a place where the equipment's really, really old, that is, that was the case at, at our school, uh, the jungle gym that was on our playground was one hundred percent death trap. That's what it was. It was awful and it needed to go ten years ago. I'll just be honest, we can call space bait here. I'm a very direct person, so I have no problem in saying that. Um, we hang in and we rip that sucker out and put a new one in. So, it depends on the space, if you wanted to add to it, if you wanted to completely redo it. If you wanted to have a fresh spot that has absolutely nothing on it and turn it into a playground, we do that too. We, we've worked in all three of those situations. But when it comes down to the design, I do not come in and say, "Hey, these are the things you have to have. These are the colors you have to use. This is the size. This is your budget." I don't do that. I work with the group that contacts me, "What do you guys feel is needed?" Because they're at that school every day. They see the need. I don't. I trust them to let me know what is truly needed. Now, I also offer back feedback of, "Hey, I, I definitely want you to use your resources wisely." Like I said, whenever I did the very first playground, that was my very first rodeo. There are things that are on that playground that I will never, ever, 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 ever in a billion years put on another one. We have a sand and water table on that. It's great in theory, but it's a certified, glorified verbath is what it is. It's nasty, it's gross, you have to clean it every day. If one of you all said, "I want one of those," that's fine, but let's, let's take a trip out to Air Street Park to Kendall and Friends playground and let's look at it on a Monday, come back Tuesday and let's look at it. And then, we'll make the decision. But ultimately, the final decision is yours. So, what we have done is we, we meet and they say, "We, these are our must-haves. These are the things that we absolutely will not stray away from. We want these things on the playground. These are the colors we want. These are some extra ideas. This is a budget. Can you throw something together and tell us what you can do?" So, we have, we, we will continue to do that. Um, nothing is set in stone until you guys say it's set in stone. So, that's something that we can go back and forth a twenty or thirty times. Nothing deals for me.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions or they want to ask at this point?
Yeah.
Yeah, Crimson, you ought to prove the product, so that's one thing that's nice about all of this. So, I guess at this point, what we really need to do to get started would be the MOU so we can work with that and then also work with Mr. Dunn.
To get that argument.
To get the community together.
Yes. So, once you guys accept bids and whatnot, like I said, we will, we will submit one too. Like I said, if you guys don't, don't want to go with Kendall and Friends, totally fine. We will still support it. We'll be there all that we can. Um, but as far as working with us, we help with, with all of the fundraising. We don't come into any organizations, city, county, school, and say, "This is gonna cost three hundred thousand dollars. When are we gonna get a check?" That's not how this works. We actually do all the fundraising, so we don't come in and ask for any school money. Now, if you guys get six months down the road and you think, "Oh, we're gonna have five thousand dollars of surplus and we would like to use that towards the playground," absolutely, that is great. But we, we don't come in and say, "Hey, this is what it's gonna cost. We need you to fork over the change." We don't do that at all. We have actually, as Kendall and Friends fundraised, one hundred percent, one hundred percent of every penny that every playground that we've ever done cost. And from twenty sixteen to now, we, we've fundraised and put back into the community a little over two million dollars through all of these playgrounds and all of our programs that we do. So, whatever comes in goes right back out.
Okay. Well, we really appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
And learned a lot.
I'm excited for you guys.
I remember the first time we met.
Yes.
Kendall was only three.
She was little. She was very little.
And had this wonderful smile and was very contagious, so.
If you want to flip through.
Is there any way you can have that presentation sent to us?
Yes, yes. Um, can you send it to them? Oh, there's a, there's a picture of Kendall down there.
There she is.
There's Eli. That's Kendall. This is Brody. This is one of her Vinnie boyfriends. I'm not gonna lie, she, she likes her little boys, loves them to death. But, that is her on our playground at our school in Bergen. Um, we started off with just those, you know, the paths and once you, I promise, once you get just a taste of the inclusiveness, you're like, "Let's do the whole thing that way." Because it's so, it, it just creates that inclusive environment where there are no boundaries. Everybody gets on the same level and it, and it's beautiful. So, I'm very excited for you guys and, and as a mom of a special needs kid, not even school-related, to have a group of people within your school that have taken the time to research, to look into things. As far as I'm aware, nobody on our team actually has a special needs child, but you see them and you work with them every day. That is beautiful. That is absolutely beautiful and that is something that you just, you can't overlook. So, I, I think it's great to see that in your all's school community because it's, it's very hard to come by sometimes. So, I'll leave you guys with some cards and if you guys have any questions, I'm up all hours of the night, so you can call, text, email, Facebook. Chances are, I'll be, I'll be awake. So, thank you guys.
Thank you so much. Great, great information. And also a whole lot of orders. All right.
Elaine.
Elaine, you are here. Would you like this?
Sure.
Ryan, do you need to adjust anything as far as presentation or?
I don't think so. Do you need to present anything on the screen?
No.
Okay. Good deal. Yep.
Am I doing this from the line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or you, or you don't have?
It doesn't matter. I'm always prepared to go to old school. I am on, I am on school. You're absolutely right. I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize for being late. I didn't know you all started at six, um, at five, so I had six on my scale. Um, I'm Elaine Wilson Redding and I'm the founder of training called Be the Elephant. And my goal tonight is to talk with you all about student safety and start, start a conversation. The packets that you all have in front of you, once you go beyond the first page, are screenshots of Facebook conversations. They are, um, printouts of newspaper articles. And they all have to do with former teachers of the Dammel school system who have, um, had either glaringly inappropriate behavior with students like J.R. Ding.
Wait, not mentioning.
No, we're mentioning names because this is all public information. This is public information. I'm not gonna say any name that isn't already, and it's, I mean, this is all, it's in the newspaper, so I'm not saying anything that isn't public.
It's up to the chair whether.
It's public information.
Well, I realize that, but I don't know whether we've had time to review this and see what. Let, let's just proceed on that we know that there have been incidents.
Okay. So, what I want to say is, two years ago, a teacher was let go from the high school for sending inappropriate Facebook messages. A few years ago, a former coach was convicted of sexually abusing a student while he was here. His picture with his victim is still hanging in the high school hallway. His picture is also hanging in the Dammel High School Hall of Fame in the, um, in the lobby of Dammel High School. There's also an article about a man who was convicted of having students inside the Dammel High, inside Dammel schools send inappropriate pictures. I'm gonna skip to the last one because it's the newest one that I know about and it's because a woman who is my age, I'm getting ready to turn sixty years old, she was a student at Junie Rogers in the seventies and mentioned this teacher on Facebook, which I know is social media, but you also see all of the comments from the people who were students at the time. So, students know and adults don't always know, but students almost always know when there's an adult in the building that is inappropriate. Be the Elephant is training for all of the adults in the school systems to show them, to train them how to recognize signs of inappropriate behavior that is called grooming. I do this training. I've done it at BAY for the faculty. I did it for all of the Dammel school system counselors and I'm here before you tonight in hopes that you all will perhaps find the funds to allow me to do this for the entire school district. I did this for the Russellville Independent School District back in August. Everyone was there. Bus drivers, cafeteria people, secretaries, faculty, administrators, coaches, everyone was there. Everyone in the Russellville school system has been trained because they had a problem inside their system. Now, these are the ones that we know about, which means there are ones that we don't know about because it is rare for students to come forward and say anything. Material in my training is based in academic research, it's based in law for Kentucky and it's also based on my own personal experience because I was sexually abused by a teacher from the time I was thirteen until I graduated from high school. from the time I was thirteen until I graduated from high school. The trial was lifelong. I did not tell anybody until ten years ago. My first husband did not know about this and none of my friends knew about this. And I vowed that I would not keep secrets any longer. I would not live in shame. I would not live with guilt. And I also wanted to find a way to keep kids safe. And we can. So Be The Elephant training means that we need to be like adult elephants. When baby elephants are in trouble, they run to the adults and the adults circle the babies and keep them safe. And that's what we need. And we also need a culture so that students have a safe person to go to and that adults have a safe person to go to to make sure that the information travels as far as it needs to go. I know there are limitations with the law. I know you can only do so much. But I think a first step is at least getting folks trained. And I live here in Danville. I can see Danville High School from my driveway. I love the Danville school system. And quite frankly, we just don't need anything else in the news like this for our system. So this is very important to me. I am passionate about this. Um, and I hope that you all as school board members will consider funding this training at some point and that Dr. Ross, that is superintendent, you will encourage your administrators to have this training at least for their school or potentially for the entire school district as we did in Russellville. Can I answer any questions?
Well, Elaine, what I do know about your trainings is that you're very good at the telltale signs that we don't notice.
Yes.
You know, it's kind of like, this person is doing this and if you're not aware that that's leading up to something or possibly something is going on, uh, I do know it's valuable information because there's just a lot of things. You know, you're with somebody every day. You would not have a clue that these kind of things would be happening, especially maybe with that particular person.
Well, and what, what I know and what I've learned from talking to other people, um, actually, when I did the BAY training, I mentioned an incident that happened in Fayette County about four or five years ago where a sixth grade choir teacher was found to have molested some students. And there's a teacher at BAY who taught at that middle school with that person. And he said he was stunned that, he said it would have knocked him over with a feather that this person had done this. And that's how they, they groomed, not just the child, but they groomed the people around the child and they groomed the community. The person that abused me is still beloved in the community where I grew up. And I have a handwritten letter where he said that he did what I said he did. So, um, you're saying, I, I understand what you're saying because you don't want to believe that. You want to believe that that person who is beloved is really that person. And this is not at all a witch hunt and this is not at all something where, you know, everybody's looking around going, oh, that person hugged that kid or that person looked at that kid. It's not that. It's just recognizing the signs. And they are there once you know what to look for.
So can I ask you a question, Elaine? First of all, I'd really appreciate you being willing to come and share this with the board. In fact, I'm not the only thing to stand in front of people and say out of camera. So I, I just want you to know that I appreciate that. Um, so it, it says on here that this is a Kentucky EPSB certified training. Would this replicate any trainings that teachers and staff already have?
No, no. And that was one of the things, one of the first things that I researched because there's no point in duplicating what's already out there. Um, I know that teachers have, um, or I guess all educators have a required, uh, sex abuse training that they have to do. And I think if it's still that video, um, that they produced ten, fifteen years ago, I don't know. I watched it just to make sure that I wasn't doing what was already on there. And their information is vastly different from what I'm doing, so, yeah.
I imagine too with social media and things that have kind of emerged over the last decade that there would be a lot that's not in that video that would be necessary.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. Thank you for that question. That's a really good question.
Do you partner with the child advocacy center?
I don't because this, my training is really school centered as opposed to, um, home centered, like based on abuse that might be happening inside the home because that, those are different signals and, and there's a different way to, to approach that. But I do know about them and when I do my presentation, I always give them as one of the resources. So, yeah.
As far as logistics go, would you be willing to go to each school individually or does it need to be everyone together as one?
Whatever works, that's for you all.
Chairman, I'm so sorry. Would you ask the board members to speak into the lines? Uh, especially, yeah, I didn't put my hearing in, so I'm not listening to that, but it's not happening. So if they would speak into the lines, it would be helpful. Thank you.
Well, Elaine, I guess the next step probably should be, and I know you've done work already within the schools. I, I would like for you to meet with the superintendent.
He and I have met. We've talked.
But I'm hoping that maybe it'll go a little further.
Okay.
Um, and see what you guys can come up with and, uh, you know, and just see what, what we can do. I think it's valuable. But like I said, I, I do know about things that you've done and presented. And I know it's, it is valuable information.
Well, my main goal is to make sure that we keep kids safe. And this is another layer that is rarely talked about.
Exactly. Does anybody else have any questions or comments superintendent?
So I did meet with her and as far as, as far as professional development goes, professional development is set a year before. Um, you know, so the professional development, um, plan for this year was set before I got here. But secondly, um, also allow schools to have a lot of, uh, flexibility on what they feel is best for their, for their teachers. So it's definitely a conversation because I also see this as important. Um, I, I do want to say this and, well, it's probably best I don't. But I, 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 I feel confident that you and I, because you have had a relationship a long time. And, and I feel that there is a lot of need for this product. Um, I don't feel like, I feel like there's a need for this product and I would pick that and I will talk some.
Okay, and I just want to be really clear. I'm not here because he and I had a really good conversation. I'm here so that the board members can hear this. That's what this conversation is about, okay? Just want to be real clear. I know Dr. Ross knows what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Elaine, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
It's really hard to stand up and talk about what you have. Thank you for doing that. All right. Let's go down to the staffing report and on six A, it's, uh, the superintendent is looking at wanting to hire a consultant for finance. If you'll expand on that a little bit, Dr. Ross.
Yes, sir. So, um, so our previous finance director was fairly new in her role. Um, in that process, uh, in her role, um, there were a lot of things that she was learning on the fly and reaching out to other districts to get support. And even though she had went through some trainings on a state level, um, she has since resigned and we're looking to hire, um, a new financial, uh, uh, finance director. Um, and I want to make sure that we surround them with the support where they don't feel overwhelmed and are grounded in the process. And the only way I know to do that is by putting them around someone that is rooted and grounded in the field and is considered not only a state or national expert in that area.
Well, and, you know, talking with Dr. Ross about this, because this is something that he definitely saw the need for. We're in a situation where we need a finance director. I'm hoping we get some response by the end of the week. Maybe that we've got somebody on board, uh, in a couple of weeks. But especially bringing someone in, you know, you may have an accounting background or you may have a finance background. But school finance is a whole other world. And there's so many things that are online and in the, on the computer, reports that have to be generated. And just the knowledge of being able to have, what I'm going to basically say this would be a coach, to be able to help direct whoever the new finance director is going to be because it's just a monumental task.
And when I reached out, when I reached out to KD about that support, they told me as best if they go to, uh, a KSPL conference and that's not until November. Um, so I mean, it's just, and they, they weren't able to add. And they said that I should reach out to other districts and obviously they're currently doing the work as well. So the only way to do it is to have someone hands on to provide them that, that opportunity to grow and learn.
So what I'm asking the board, basically the contract is a personal service contract. Uh, it's up to ten thousand dollars it would be for this school year. It's, it's a very basic contractor. It's not benefits. There's not anything else that goes along with it except for the time that they would be here to, uh, help train the new finance officer and be a consultant to the superintendent also.
And I know Kim also was over HR as well, when you had a consultant to help in that role. What role? Or do we know at this point or are we splitting roles or do we, how are we doing that?
I'm going to let Dr. Ross answer that. Um, so we have recently hired an HR clerk. Um, and also our current payroll both have been, uh, trained in, uh, all the benefit services. So we feel as though if we hire a strong candidate, um, that they will be able to, uh, provide that role of, uh, HR and finance leadership. Also the consultant that we're looking at, he is over both HR and finance in, in, in his district. So it's not like he is focused on one, one area. Um, he's also the president of both major state organizations regarding, uh, finance in the state. So it's a, it's a solid, it's a solid person that knows what he's doing.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
No, do we need a new motion?
Do we do the motion please?
A motion for hiring consultant for finance and it's Rodney.
Jackson.
Jackson.
Sir. We have a motion accept and a second for the hiring of a consultant for finance and HR. Uh, Mr. Jackson and all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion carries. Okay, um, Mr. Gover, I'm going to have you speak on this. Uh, the bait counselor situation, it's really not a bad situation, but it's something that we, we kind of just overlooked.
Yeah, so last year, uh, we had a hybrid counselor at BAY Middle School, um, who had twenty-three extended days. And this year, we switched that position over to a full-time certified position because the person that was in the position took another job within the district. So we hired a full-time certified. And when that got transferred to the new salary schedule, somehow the extended days went down to eighteen. Um, and so we're asking the board tonight just to increase that position by five extended days because in the summer in the middle school, you know, that person's had to do the bulk of the scheduling and things like that. So it's basically to, to put that position back to what it was extended day-wise last year.
So you explained to me that how the twenty-three days has, has been determined because?
Um, right now, the elementary counselors have eighteen extended days and the high school counselors have twenty-eight extended days. So back, I don't know, I wasn't involved in that decision, but at some point, the district landed on the middle school counselor having in between those two. Um, because, you know, the high school counselors, they do a lot in summer as well. Um, but the middle school counselor just needs those extra five days for, for scheduling purposes mainly.
So does anybody have any comments or questions or concerns? Okay, with that, can we have a motion please?
I'm having a motion to extend the contract by five additional days for the next two possible.
Motion in a second for the extension of the extra days from eighteen to twenty-three. Uh, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all. Um, Mr. Dunn, are you available to talk about, uh, the hiring of a bus mechanic?
Sure. The individual that we're, uh, I'd like to hire in this position, he's already been, he's a current driver for us. It's forty-year, uh, he's forty-year mechanical technician of the industry. He's got extensive experience in heavy machinery, diesel mechanics, and, uh, he's currently a bus driver for the district now. Um, he's been very instrumental in assisting our transportation manager and mechanic in getting our fleet up and running and maintaining them. There was an instance this past spring where, um, one of the buses was having an issue. We were about to leave, head out for, after a dismissal. Then another bus started having an issue and he was able to get off of his bus and go solve the problem that we, uh, other drivers had on his while Wayne was already handling the issue that was going on on the bus that he was on.
So, so can I ask, this is not a full-time mechanic position?
No, no, sir.
That would be shared along with his bus driver duties? And one thing I do know that's been taking place is that some of these minor bus repairs are happening out in the parking lot.
Yes.
And we have just now rented a facility, uh, to, to take care of that part of it. So, um, and I remember this fellow being hired a while back with the idea that they also would take over some of the mechanic duties in-house instead of always having to farm them out.
Yeah, well, the individual, the mechanic part of it is, or this new position, it just kind of fell into our lap as far as him, you know, his knowledge and expertise in dealing with like a lot of the electrical issues that, um, Wayne did not have, you know, the extensive experience with. And he also has a lot of his own equipment that he was, he was able to bring in that we didn't have. And he was able to, you know, help troubleshoot and Wayne could be up working on one thing and he, he would be under the bus or vice versa, helping, saying, you know, look at this, try this. Because otherwise, um, he's out there in the garage by himself or I'm standing around and he's trying to explain to me what to do.
So, so Mr. Dunn, is it fair to say, is it fair to say that basically he's been doing the mechanic work and the bus driver?
Yeah, yeah, and, and he did it basically all summer.
And, and even when you all called him the weekend, you know, the situations past weekend?
Yes. So he's been very beneficial to us maintaining and keeping our buses on the road.
Yeah, it's a win-win for the district, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Are you a pregnancy manager?
Okay, we need a, thank you, Mr. Dunn. We, we need a motion please.
I'm making a motion that we add a four-hour position for a bus mechanic as presented.
Accepted.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to add a four-hour position for a bus mechanic. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Okay, Dr. Ross, if you will address number six on the rollover funds.
Yes, sir. Uh, so last year, you all as a board appointed, uh, certain funds, uh, for clubs and organizations. Um, and they did not use all of that money. And they're just asking to have access to it this year, to, to the money that's left over. So as it rolls over, they, they will be able to use that money this year as well.
You know, uh, recollection is, uh, through the use of, uh, funds that we, we've gotten from the federal government, we, we were actually able to jump into that and we, we awarded fifty-one thousand dollars to all the organizations in school, uh, not all of them, but most of them because they may not be generating funds anymore because of COVID. So I was really surprised to hear when Dr. Ross said, well, Mr. Becker, we have actually some funds left over. So when he wanted to make the request that they roll back into, uh, I thought it was, it was another win. uh, I thought was, it was another win situation for us. So do you all, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Nope.
Okay. Do we need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the rollover of funds used in the school system.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the rollover funds, uh, left over from last school year. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Um, the rest is consent agenda. We generally do that without discussion. Uh, if there's anything on there that you all wanna talk about, we can. Uh, but it's, it's all pretty straightforward stuff, especially all that I'm able to see. So, uh, do we have a motion, please?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, we have a motion accept, uh, second for the approval of the consent agenda without discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And the last but not least, number eight is adjournment of the meeting. We need a motion, please.
We adjourned this meeting.
Mr. Ball is in BAY motion.
I second.
And Mrs. Bruce and Terry, seconded. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all.